When you're focusing, I'm hitting the ball the last thing.
Awesome. So you're gonna cue up the video, guys?
Yes.
And then I don't know if, remember, isn't it? I'll find it. One of us will say. This is always a question. So what you would just do, if you can say, whereas, therefore, on behalf of Mayor Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do I hereby proclaim he would just be on behalf of?
Yeah.
Yep. It's every time when we forget to say something like this. So everyone has their own version, but that's what I've seen. We'll find him. We'll find him. He was just upstairs, so he'll be in shortly.
We're gonna go ahead and call the August 19th City Council meeting to order. If everyone please rise and state the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Okay, are there any announcements? Leah, announcements? No? I thought I saw some. Okay. Proclamations. We have two. Brad Deremer, would you please read the first one?
George, would you go ahead and go to the stand, please? I'd like to introduce George Stavropoulos, Vietnam veteran, Silver Star Award, and four Purple Hearts to read the proclamation tonight. Thank you, George.
Mr. Mayor and City Council members and all those in attendance, thank you very much for being here. Whereas the Korean War was fought June 25th, 1950, through July 27th, 1953, and whereas more than 1.7 million men and women, American men and women, served in the Korean War, and whereas we honor Americans, Korean War veterans, whose service and sacrifice allow us to enjoy the freedoms and the liberties we have today, and whereas each year, on July 27th, we commemorate the anniversary of the end of the Korean War and the ceasefire on that date, and whereas the City of Fishers extends greetings and best wishes to all observing this day. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim July 27th as Korean War Armistice Day. In the City of Fishers and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it.
Thank you, George. Well, thank you, George. Oh, there is a present.
Sorry.
I really wanna thank the Mayor and the City of Fishers for the July 23rd proclamation, which recognizes the armistice that ended the Korean conflict, the 27th of July, 1953. The next day, on the 24th, I was at lunch, and I saw a gentleman wearing a Korean War veteran ball cap with his wife, and he was quite an elderly gentleman, and there were six other adults joining what I thought was the man and his wife, and I introduced myself to him, and sure enough, he was a Korean War veteran. And he had some strong thoughts about serving, and he was more involved with his memory than his awareness of me being there talking to him, but I wanted to give him a salute, which I did, and his family were six adult children, a couple, three of them by marriage and three of them by birth. And I talked to the adults, and I said, are you aware of the armistice coming up on the 27th? And they weren't. And I said, well, let me show you something. And I showed him a picture of the proclamation that I received via email, and they were very excited about it. The wife was a little bit more cognizant of what that was, the gentleman wasn't really attuned to it, but the adult children were. And it turns out, two of them live in Fishers. And I said, well, you ought to be paying attention to this and look forward on the website or the city site. But here we were, the day after the proclamation was signed by the mayor, and I had the opportunity to bring that to the attention of a Korean War veteran. And while it meant something to him and his wife, it meant an awful lot to their six adult children. And that's what we get to do with proclamations like this, and that is perpetuate important ideals through generations. I just wanna thank the City of Fishers and the City Council and the mayor. I hope this makes you smile tonight. It's something for us to be really proud of as citizens of this terrific city. Thank you.
I can tell you personally, George, and for the other veterans, my father served in the Air Force during the Korean War, and so it means a lot to me. I guess I really hadn't thought about it until this proclamation. I was a vet myself, so I thank you for your service. I know all of us feel that way, so thank you.
Rich, real quick, the only thing I'd say is I've actually been to Seoul, South Korea, and I've been to the Korean War Museum, and what I can say is that the Korean people, all different age groups, they value that freedom that was given to them. And if you go to the Korean War Museum there, there's one wing with all of the people that made the ultimate sacrifice on the Korean side. It's just as long on the American side, too. They have every name listed, they have every state where they were from, and like I said, when I was walking through the museum, but just that entire city, all different age groups, they appreciate what was given to them. So I just thought I'd mention that, since I've been there and experienced it.
Thank you, Dave. We have one more proclamation that it's very appropriate that Elliot Holkman will introduce this.
Yeah, thanks, Council Block. So I had the opportunity to attend a birthday party the other week for Ray Mara. Ray Mara is a Fishers resident, exceptional human being, a member of the Greatest Generation, who turned 97 years young, and is a World War II vet, who served in the United States Army. And he had a birthday party at Hardee's there on 116th and Allisonville in the morning. He had about 5,000 calories worth of cake right there, but his wife, Loretta, was there, and he was surrounded by a lot of fantastic human beings, a lot of Fishers residents and military veterans, to include Brigadier General Candidate as well. So this is a very appropriate proclamation for a fantastic Fishers resident, Master Sergeant Ray Mara.
Do you wanna read it, Elliot?
Yeah, I'd love to. So whereas Angelo Ray Mara was born on August 8th, 1922, in Cleveland, Ohio, Ray has lived in Cincinnati, Ohio, as well as Indianapolis, and moved to Fishers later in his retirement. And whereas Ray served in World War II in the United States Army, Ray served in Burma and later China, was a Master Sergeant in charge of many construction projects. Whereas after the war, Ray started a construction business with his brother and a friend, and completed projects across the nation. Ray's brother developed one of the first tunnel boarding machines, built tunnels across the United States. And whereas Ray's wife, Loretta, moved to Fishers later in life and enjoyed Retirement Club in Fishers. Whereas Ray is known for his warm, friendly personality as many friends around the nation. And whereas Angelo Ray Mara is turning 97 years old on August 8th, 2019. Therefore, Scott Fadness, Mayor of the City of Fishers, do hereby proclaim August 8th as Angelo Ray Mara Day. In the City of Fishers and all residents are encouraged to celebrate it.
Thank you, Elliot. For those who don't know, Elliot Holkman was a graduate of the U.S. Naval Academy, served 14 years or 12 years active duty, and is still a reservist. So that's why it is very appropriate that he introduce this. Thank you for your service. Okay, any presentations? Okay, moving on. Finance Committee report, John.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Rich. We did meet the Budget Finance Committee last Monday and had a high overview of our fiscal plan and also a first look at our budget for 2020. There'll be a number of other meetings coming up here to go in detail to our budget, as well as our public hearing on the budget, I believe, in the September council meeting. In addition, there's an item on the tonight's agenda that was actually was recommended for approval at last, not this month, but last month's Budget Finance Committee, item nine, ordinance is 071519C. That's it.
Thank you, John. Consent agenda, item six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Pete, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Item seven, R081919B.
Good evening. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development. The item before you tonight is a resolution approving an economic development agreement for Lake Meadows Assisted Living Facility. It is going to be located at 126th Street and Hoosier Road. They have requested an impact fee waiver for their $24 million investment. This will include 123 assisted living units, and they anticipate employing at least 78 new employees at this facility. They have, again, asked for an impact fee waiver of all Fishers fees up to $200,000. Anybody? Got someone here tonight who'd like to say a few words regarding the project.
Good evening. Dan Hubbard with CNH Capital. We really appreciate the consideration. We're excited to be here in Fishers and building the project. I live in Fishers, been here since 96, 98, somewhere around there. And we're excited to get started and build some quality of assisted living on 126th Street, which is a really tough to develop piece of land.
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Just appreciate Dan bringing some more senior housing to my generation. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, motion approved by Pete, second by Todd. Sorry, you have something?
I have a question. With these assisted living facilities, what kind of impact do they have on our paramedics and things like this? How many extra calls do they require?
As a rule of thumb, it's about one call per bed a year. That's what we found. So now that's typically more on the skilled side. On assisted living, the farther you get away from intensive skilled care, the more that ratio lessens, but to be conservative, you could figure about one call per bed per year.
If there are no other questions, a motion by Pete, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion carries. Item eight, 081919E.
Good evening. For the record, Ethan Lee, Director of Human Resources, here to propose a amendment to the SALLY ordinance, where we would want to add a position of agricultural manager under Parks and Recreation. This position would lead all the various programs and operations at the Fishers Agro Park. Happy to answer any questions.
Ethan, this was a contract position before, now it's an employee?
This would be an employee of the city, correct.
Going away from a contract position, correct?
Correct.
So net zero on the budget?
Yeah, as far as that contract not being in existence after this position would be in place.
Well, to clarify that, the current agreement out there had any of the, any of the produce that was generated was where that individual would make their income, so we weren't paying a direct fee to them. But now that it's coming in-house, any of the produce that we make or sell could offset, and same with the program and things of that nature. Sponsorships, all of that would be coming to the City of Fishers, and we anticipate the majority of that will offset the cost of this individual's salary. But I just wanna clarify that, we're not, we had a contract with this individual, but that contract was making his, their money off of sponsorships and the sale of the produce. We intend to do the same, but the revenue will be coming to the city instead of that individual.
Still not looking at any kind of major impact to the budget.
No, I think we'll offset.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion to suspend the rule by Pete, second by Selena. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Pete, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you, Ethan. Item nine, 071519C.
Hi. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you is a continuation of the item that was brought before you last month regarding the issuance of bonds for the Pullman Point, the Skanel project, off of, excuse me, over by I-69. These are, as we discussed last month, these are the conduit bonds that the developer will be purchasing of an amount not to exceed $7 million. And as a reminder, conduit debt doesn't show on the financial statements of the city. They simply show as a note in the table that this is an obligation that is out there, but it is not the city's. Is there any other questions?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete. Is there a second? Second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two, two notes? Okay, thank you. You get that? It was David and Cecilia. Item 10, R081919A.
Good evening. Tony Begato, Director of Planning. For the record, the item before you is a deficiency report for the Fire Station 93, which is over on Allisonville Road by the Municipal Airport. If there's, if you need to see the drawings, I can pull them up in a few minutes, otherwise I'm available for questions.
Anyone like to see drawings, questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by John, second by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item 11, 081919.
Again, Tony Begato, Director of Planning. The item before you is for voluntary annexation of Bridger Pines 2. As shown in the concept plan here, this was already approved by a planning commissioner of City Council in 2015, 16, as a PUD, and so this area has not started construction yet, but they're getting ready to. So as part of the construction, they need to annex the property, and staff is here to recommend approval. There's a public hearing, and we're recommending suspending the rules after the public hearing and having all the readings.
Okay, so this, this is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? If so, you'll be given three minutes, which to speak. If you introduce yourself and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve. It's a voluntary annexation, just a process we're gonna go through. So again, motion to approve.
Motion approved, motion approved by Pete, second by Eric. I'm sorry?
Hey, Tony, I miss, we've got a voluntary annexation. You have the public hearing. You're bringing the fiscal plan next month?
Correct, yeah. So it's actually only first and second reading.
So we're just gonna have, we're gonna have the public hearing, which has been closed. We're gonna have first and second reading.
Okay.
At next month's meeting, you'll have the fiscal plan and the final reading. I thought you had the fiscal plan included.
I thought we'd already done this, honestly. All right, thank you. So item 12, item 081919A.
Can you combine 12 and 13 in your discussion?
Sure.
Thank you.
Very good.
Good evening. For the record, Ross Hillary, City of Fishers, Planner 3. Before you tonight is the right-of-way vacation, as well as the utility easement for the Skanel-South Point project. Just for some information, the project is located north of Fishers Point Boulevard and along Lantern Road in Meadows Drive. It's these 14 lots right here. You'll see here, this is the right-of-way vacation that is being requested. It is Meadowbrook Drive, as well as these two pieces of area along Lantern Road, approximately .048 acres and 25 square feet. And at the request, I'll also show you the utility vacation. It is located right here, in between those lots on Lantern and Meadowbrook. With that, staff recommends the suspension of the rules for the first, second, and third reading. This is a public hearing, so we do also need to do that.
Thank you, Ross. We can combine the public hearing for these, can't we?
Yeah, but state for the record that you're opening both up.
Okay. For the record, we'll open up the public hearing on both items 12 and 13. We will take action separately, but are there members of the public who wish to speak? If so, if you'd state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on items 12 and 13.
And I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on item 12 and approve on first reading.
Motion by Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by John. Okay, all in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Question?
Yes, sir.
The vacation of the right-of-way, who does that go to then?
Part, as part of the project is going to the developer.
Okay, Chris, is that, 'cause I thought some of the laws, it went to the adjoining owners 50/50, which would be them, 'cause they own the two lots.
They do own the lots on both sides.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure we're, okay, thank you.
To Brad, okay.
And I'll second.
All right, motion by Eric to approve item 12, second by Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Now a motion to suspend the rules on item.
Oh, 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 just for the record, that was just Cecilia? Okay.
Okay.
One, one, you get that, Jennifer?
Okay, now I'm gonna make a motion to suspend the rules on item 13.
Second.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Pete, second by John. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Motion to approve item 13? Second.
All right, motion to approve by Eric, second by Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One name. Item 14, 081919C.
Good afternoon. Andrew McGee, Planner for the City of Fishers. Tonight before you is ordinance 081919C, and this is a signage standards text amendment to that article of the Unified Development Ordinance. That would be Article 6 dot 16, signage standards. So this proposed text amendment is to address three different items. One of them was an affirmation of viewpoint neutrality, which I'll get into in a second. The second item was to address specifics relating to drive-through menus, and the third is to address temporary signs. So the first item, it's just real brief. We added an affirmation that our signage standards are not intended to censor speech, regulate viewpoints, or favor non-commercial or commercial speech over others. So this was just a section that we added to the sign code. The second item, as part of this text amendment, is addressing drive-through signage. So we have added standards for digital drive-through menu boards, which is something that we did not address specifically before. Therefore, they were not allowed in the city. We had several companies come to us and say that's causing them issues, that digital drive-through boards are the industry standard now, and that they don't really have brand-approved alternatives. So we worked with some companies, we reviewed some sign standards and best practices, and we've come up with regulations regarding these drive-through signage, as far as brightness, frequency, that things can change on the signs. And I just wanna reiterate that digital signage under this amendment would be allowed only for drive-through menus, and it would not apply to any other type of commercial signs. So there is no new allowances beyond just using them for drive-throughs. And then the third, and really the largest item, were amendments to our temporary signs, the way that we can regulate temporary signs, really to address some challenges that have come up in the last couple of years. So back in early 2018, we proposed changes that were approved to the sign code to eliminate regulation based on content. This is something we did in response to a 2015 Supreme Court decision that basically said that if you regulate signage based on content of the sign, that's a violation of freedom of speech. So we removed a lot of the way that we regulated temporary signs, and it caused some issues, created some vague situations, kind of left the lot open to interpretation, and we felt that we could do a better job in how we regulate these. So one thing we can do, if we can't regulate based on content, currently we're regulating based on time and place, but we can also regulate signs based on the type of sign they are physically. So currently in our sign code, we just say temporary sign. Well, what does that really mean? It kinda means a lot, and it's created some interpretation issues, and so we wanna make sure that we're clear, businesses, residents, that we can respond better to the different types of signs that are out there and the situations that we would use them. So now we're proposing to define signs based on type, like a post sign, a yard sign, a banner, sandwich boards, A-frame, sidewalk signs, things like that. So those are really the bulk of the proposed changes. We also just added some edits for clarity and consistency, making it more clear when permits are required or aren't required. Again, trying to just Again, trying to just make this more responsive to our residents and our business owners in the city. So staff recommends approval of this ordinance, which would approve the text amendment as proposed tonight. So if you have any questions, I can help answer them. Thanks.
Tony, do you mind trying to articulate a concern that was voiced, I think both at Planning Commission, but I got the email that I forwarded to you from Mike Colby. He was concerned about some of the temporary signage and what I think the ordinance tries to address related to that.
Yeah, both at the Planning Commission and conversations with Mike and Rich, I've just indicated, there was concerns about some of the signs on Allisonville Road, which have been a more problem area that we're trying to address. So this will actually help that, we believe. But he was concerned that some of the advertising they put on those signs, and again, my response to that is we can't control the content. So if someone wants to have a temporary sign and it says nail special 499, we can't control that. So that's one thing that, you know, we just can't get into. The one of the things he's brought up, that we have had a lot, the feather flags up or other kind of temporary signs that are prohibited in the code, but the code where it says it's prohibited, says they also may be allowed through a temporary use permit. So we have allowed temporary advertising devices to be business-friendly, but I've said that is something, if the council chooses, we don't have to allow those type of signs. I haven't seen them as an overall concern, where I would recommend not to allow them, but it could always change in the future if we do see an abuse of maybe advertising devices and too cluttered. But overall, I would just say, these changes are meant to address Mike's concerns. I think he's just used to an older code where you had a lot more control, which under the 2015 Supreme Court case, we don't have that kind of control anymore, and we're trying to tighten it up as best we can.
And what's the thing on political signs, Tony, so, because it's coming up again next month?
Yeah, I mean, political signs fall under the same as a temporary sign, so you can actually have a sign up all year long, one sign on any property for anything, so it could be a political sign. You know, basically, the state law does say you can't regulate anything within 60 days, so you wouldn't even be able, right now, we say you can have one. So technically, within 60 days of an election, they can put up as many as they want. The only thing we can always enforce is nothing in the right-of-way. That's what we stick to. But on your property, within 60 days, you can put 10 or 100 yard signs up. We can't enforce that part of the code.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Any other questions?
Yeah, real quick, Tony, back to Mike's question. That was, I know it was one business in particular, and I know what he was talking about, there was a sandwich board. And I understand that, you know, you can have certain things on it, you can't restrict what they put on it, but as far as size, is there a way, I guess through this, that we can, you know, limit? Because they had like a four-by-eight sheet.
So as part of the proposed changes, that sandwich board along the road frontage, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
That would not be an allowed sign type under these proposed changes. Currently, yeah, currently, we allow a sign, and the type of sign is open to interpretation. But these changes would prohibit that kind of sign along a roadway.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Pete. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you. Item fifteen, zero eight one nine one nine D.
Okay, once again, Tony Begato, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item before you is considered a UDO update. It is a little lengthy, I would say, than a normal update cleanup ordinance, but it was due to the fact that we approved an entire UDO last year that was written by myself. And so there's mistakes that my staff has found, or the developers have found. Unfortunately, I'm human, so things didn't come out clear, so there's quite a bit of updates with that. There's also some changes that are going to be proposed to residential development standards, and this was based on conversations the mayor and I had last year going into this season, and one of the goals was to look at our development standards and the potential cost on residential construction to the developers. And so I spent about six months with all the departments in City Hall that review construction plans, and we went through every single standard, procedure, policy, kind of regulation that would impact development. And so there's some proposed modifications to change here to try to alleviate some of the costs, but also just makes the best practical sense. Sometimes we change standards in our own little silos of a department and don't look at the cumulative impact, and that's what this was done. As well as I interviewed builders and developers to get their experience, customer service experience, construction experience, and what they're seeing in the market. And then again, the other stuff is cleanup language, and one change with some recent state law that was related to beekeeping. And so with this cleanup ordinance, really, I don't want to go through the whole thing again, it's kind of eight pages, that was all intended to change things that are already in the code, or if they're new, they're being discussed, that were discussed at the Planning Commission public hearing, and briefly again tonight. So we are changing, reducing some of the home size requirements in the UDO. This was discussed at the Planning Commission and supported with the rest of the ordinance. We're looking at reducing some of the landscaping material. We just talked to developers and said they believe that there was a high cost to landscape material, not only on the front end, but also for maintenance to property owners, as well as DHOA, that there's a lot of shrub requirements that leads to overgrowth. We're looking at changing the way street trees, because of the impact of utilities on sidewalks to the trees, we're moving those out of the planting strip and into the front yard. And by doing that, we can actually reduce the required planting strip, which today requires eight feet. With the tree moving to the front yard now, we're going to reduce the planting strip down to four feet, and then in return, we could reduce the local right-of-way on local streets down to, from 56 feet to 50 feet. But the overall asphalt width will remain the same. So that was for fire, to make sure they had enough, when we have parking on both sides, they want to make sure there's enough width for safety access. So the road width itself doesn't change from an asphalt perspective. And then we're also changing our minor subdivision process to make it easier for someone who wants to do a lot split that's five lots or less, to be a more streamlined process that's also consistent with state law. So briefly, here's the changes to the home sizes, highlighted in green is the current standards, and the proposed size is in red. Again, we feel this is a minor adjustment to the existing standards. We still have home sizes that are relatively large in the larger districts of larger lots. And then for, this was a comparison just to show in our survey that Fishers was one of the hardest, largest ones we found in Indiana with the size requirements in the UDO. One of the other changes in the ordinance will allow the grandfathering existing structures. We've had some issues where if a home's 20 years old today, but for some reason doesn't meet a setback when it was built, but was already approved, someone can argue that that home doesn't comply and needs to potentially be torn down to fix that. So we were now saying any home or structure built today that is legal, without any building violations on it today, can be grandfathered in if it's more than 10 years old and is, was approved under the plans in the past. Then again, some procedure clarifications, just what are the appeal process, because there was some misprint there. Clarifying standards, like whether or not a bike rack, so we require bicycle parking in the parking code, and it's not clear whether or not if someone puts in one rack, does that count as one bicycle space or two? So things were clarifying, things like that. And again, with state law, there was a law passed this year that says that beekeeping must be allowed in every town, city, or jurisdiction, that nobody can prohibit that. And since our ordinance had no standards, without any standards, basically, people can have as many hives as they want. So I looked at an ordinance that has been supported by Avalon and other areas around Indiana, and think that that's a compromise for allowing beekeeping under the state law. So we have some control, but still are in compliance. And that's it for, is there any questions? Again, this was discussed at Planning Commission, and they were supportive unanimously of the, of this ordinance.
Questions for Tony? Tony, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things, because I know we had some lengthy discussion. Brad, you brought up a number of points in the Planning Commission. I remember one of the comments that we had was about an encroachment, or if you will, violation in the tree conservation area, that there would be some sort of punitive effect. Is that the case?
Well, I increased the penalty for the trees. So it went from one six-inch caliber to two, and from two three-inch calibers to three. So we talked about increasing the amount of trees required, so that was changed in that section.
Okay, I see what you did, yep.
So if they tear out one, they got to replace two?
Yep.
At least two, maybe three, yeah, depending on the size of the caliber they put in.
Yep, got it. What were the other areas concerned, just so public?
About something on every page.
Okay.
We spent an hour on it.
Yeah, I probably, I can cover it briefly if you want.
Okay, that's all right. I mean, if you think we've covered it, I know we.
I incorporated the changes, I know that.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Real quick, Tony, on the street trees, I know we talked about it at the work session, you talked about it briefly a second ago, is it basically the street tree that would have been required, it's been moved from where it was currently located to inside the yard? So we haven't added?
Correct.
It's just been moved.
Correct, and we did reduce the tree from the front yard requirement, so we wouldn't have too many trees.
It was on the east side of town, where you see more new homes, it seems, so that's pretty sparse. But if you come to the western side, where you see what it looks like in 15 to 20 years, if you plant two or three, it's going to become, it's, it's not going to be good once you get it further up on, depending on the size of the lot. But I think by just moving it, I think that saves sidewalks, and it doesn't make it too much for the lot.
Right.
Very good, any other questions?
Motion.
Motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete. Is there a second? Second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Tony. Item sixteen, zero eight one nine one nine F.
And the last one here is an update to our thoroughfare plan. One of the changes is to be consistent with the right-of-way, the right-of-way change, we have to change it on the local roads down to 50 feet. And then there was some additional connections for our Greenway Trail that's supported in the city's Greenway plans. So with that, staff's available to answer any questions.
Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Pete, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, okay. That concludes the 16 items, but are there any other unfinished or new business items to discuss? Nope? Yes? Well, you had, any, any comments or signatures? Yeah, I think there was a comment made that we have some scouts in the audience. You are welcome to come up now, or maybe if you don't mind, I think we're nearly complete. If you don't mind waiting till the end, if you need signatures, or if you need to say anything, you're welcome to come forward in the community comment section, which is next. No? You just here to attend and learn? Okay, very good. All right, so we're going to open up item 18, community comment. This is open for members of the community who wish to make a public.
Rich, and I have some, after community comment, I'll talk about it after.
All right, yep, very good, thank you, John.
Won't take long.
Okay. Are there any members wishing to come forward, speak? Yes, ma'am. Again, for the record, if you would state your name and address, you'll be given three minutes of which to speak.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Janet Dermody Bear. I live at 7404 Madden Drive. The lack of affordable housing was called out in the newspaper, and was quite a front-page story, quite large, actually. And it's something that I've been very cognizant of as I watch prices rise in the area. And I understand that with this reading tonight, that you've made an opportunity for people to build smaller homes, which I would hope would result in less expensive homes. You're all aware of the need for quality, affordable housing in Fishers, and that need is growing as we provide more jobs for people, and those jobs are not going to pay as much money as we would like. It was called out in the paper that the people who work at IKEA and people who work in restaurants don't have the money to afford to live here. So my question is, I'd like to hear about your plans for affordable housing, so that the workers who come here are able to live here and enjoy our very good schools, and enjoy our very good quality of life. So I just want to know specifically what funding and what programs you'll use to provide affordable housing, housing, excuse me, to 80, to people who are 80% below median.
Is that, is that the ending of your questions? Okay.
The question is the end of it.
All right. I don't know who wants to take a stab at it. I mean, I'm happy to take a first stab and others chime in. I mean, I think we passed an ordinance even tonight that was an example of our support of affordable housing. This was the senior project that they were struggling to make their economics work, and I think there's a recognition that particularly for seniors with limited budgets, there is a need at times to offer support, because I think there is a need, and I know, Brad, you can speak to that, but I know that's, that's something we're very sensitive to. To the overall affordable housing, I think we recognize the diversity is needed, but the definition of, you know, what becomes affordable is often hard to define, or at least it means different things to different people. And I think that, you know, I think there's a commitment from all of us on the council to continue to support that and really create that diversity. So I don't think there's a question there, and I don't know if other members of the council would like to speak to that, too.
Excuse me, could you, could you tell me what that definition of affordability is? You know, if we look at young people, elderly people, people with disabilities moving into our community because they're getting jobs here, what does that mean to be affordable? And that's why I'm suggesting 80% of median, of their income, to be something that's affordable for them, or the city provides, and what I'm asking is, what will the city provide to make that possible?
Yeah, so there's a couple of programs. One, if you had followed earlier this year, the council approved an incentive package for an affordable housing project, a multifamily housing project. It was a workforce housing, and I believe the average was 60% of the median income in Hamilton County was kind of the sweet spot. We were very hopeful that we would receive funding through the state. We competed on that, and unfortunately, we did not get the award for it, but they are reapplying this summer for, the anticipation would be that they would make a selection in the fall. And we're partnering with the developer to try to accomplish that here in Fishers and downtown Fishers. So again, and we actually had conversations with lieutenant governors and others to talk about why it's so difficult to develop these types of products in Hamilton County, in urbanizing or suburban areas. And we had some very good discussions, and I think they've changed some of their processes to, to make it more of an opportunity for suburban environments to be able to be competitive in those processes. So I'm hopeful that through kind of learning and education and insight, we can work together with the state to guide some of those federal dollars, instead of to rural or economically depressed areas, but to actually growing in suburban areas. And we're hopeful that that will lead to a successful project in the fall.
Thank you, Scott.
Yep.
And thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Any questions? Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak? Doug?
Doug Almond, Fall Creek Township trustee. I just learned just today that longtime Fall Creek Township trustee Marion Hensley passed away this weekend, served, served our community for 20 years as trustee, four years as a board member. Had a great influence in developing the fire station out there at 92 in the Fall Creek